Good morning, everyone. I'm Angela Davis and I am thrilled you are listening today. One year ago, St. Paul made history when it became the first major city in the United States to install an all-female city council. And six of its seven members are women of color. All of them are 40 or younger. And right now, all seven of them are here with me at NPR News for a North Star Journey Live conversation to reflect on this historic year in office. Welcome, councilwomen. So wonderful to have you here with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So let's start by having each of you introduce yourselves. And so I want our listeners to really get a chance to hear your voices very early on in this. And so maybe one at a time, you can tell us a little bit about the part of St. Paul that you represent and a little bit about yourself, a couple of things you'd like people to know about you, whether it's about your personal background or your profession. Because you're close to me, I'm going to start with you. Sarah, tell us about yourself.
Yes, hi. My name is Sarah Jost. I represent Ward Three in St. Paul, which is Highland Park and McAllister Groveland, as well as part of the West Seventh area. Again, this is my first year on the city council. I also work as an engineer, working on water and wastewater infrastructure design. And then I'm also a mom.
Wonderful. And next to you, we have Nelsi.
Hi, I'm Nelsi Yang. I'm the council member in St. Paul Ward Six, so that's in the east side of St. Paul. So if folks have been to Lake Phelan, which is one of my favorite spots in my ward, or been to our wonderful restaurants, businesses along Payne Avenue, White Bear Avenue, Arcade Street, Maryland, like those are all the popular spots in my ward as well. I live in the east side with my husband and my two kids. I became a mom during my first term. I have a two-year-old and also an eight-month-old. And I really love what I do. I'm so humbled by it. I get, you know, this is honestly never where I would have thought I would be. I grew up as a daughter of refugees and someone in a low-income family who wasn't involved in politics at all. So being where I am now is really a privilege and an honor to be able to fight for working-class families and fight for the world that I believe we all deserve.
Great. We love getting to know each of you. Next, we have Anika.
Thank you so much, Angela, for hosting us. My name is Anika Bowie, and I proudly serve as the St. Placid Councilwoman for Ward One. The neighborhoods in my ward are Rondo, Summit University, Frog Town, Cathedral Hill, a little bit of Summit Hill, the Midway, and the North End area. And a little bit about me, before running for office, you know, I proudly served as the vice president for the Minneapolis NAACP. I come from a really strong grassroots movement organizers. My dad or my parents both own a grocery store in Rondo, right on Selby. And you know, I come from a resilient community. Like councilmember Yang, I never thought that I would be elected. There was also councilmembers who led before me, like Mayor Carter and also Deputy Montgomery. So there is always representation there. I'm just so humbled and honored to lead in that legacy and, you know, get us to a place of repair and get to a place of building trust within our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Shaniqua, you're next.
Well, thank you. My name is councilmember Johnson or Shaniqua. I kind of prefer Shaniqua even still to this day. I represent Ward Seven on the east side of St. Paul. So Dayton's Bluff, Hywood Hills, Battle Creek, Eastview, Conway, Sweet Hollow, Mounds Park. It's really kind of what I like to say, if you look on a map and maybe if you look on a country map, it looks kind of like the Florida side of St. Paul, but much, much better.
Okay.
But I think just like in many ways, it's been a privilege to just serve my community. I am a Minnesota native, lifelong Minnesotan. I grew up in a rural town and then--
You grew up in Worthington.
Yeah, and you know, moved to the Twin Cities for school and stayed here and now live in Dayton's Bluff. And sometimes, I swear, in my ward, it feels a little bit like a rural community sometimes. Like it's a small town, a small community space. East Side's really close knit. I value a lot of major priorities for us, like housing, public safety. Community engagement is really key on the east side. You know, eastsiders roll hard for east side. And that's what I've learned to do as a leader. And it's been really important for us to just see that representation move forward. I work and predominantly worked in politics for the last 12 years. I'm also a former program officer at the St. Paul Minnesota Foundation. And so philanthropy, politics, public service has been really my passion since I was a child. I knew that I wanted to make a difference. I didn't really know what that looked like. And similar to a lot of the folks that are here, I don't come from a background of politics. My family is not historically a politician. We were legit. My mom was a nurse. My dad was a Yuguen worker. And I don't know how I ended up in politics. My mom asked me that all the time, but I think it's--
We're going to talk about that.
Yeah.
You're going to talk about that. Next, let's hear from Rebecca.
Well, thanks so much, Angela. My name is Rebecca Naker. I represent Ward Two on the city council. And Ward Two is the west side neighborhood, West Seventh, Summit Hill, and downtown St. Paul, and then a bit of railroad island as well. I live on the west side with my husband and my two sons. In my spare time, when I'm not working on the council, I like to take walks in my neighborhood. I love to ride my bike. I love to look for birds. I've recently gotten into birding, which is kind of weird, but really interesting, believe it or not. And I love to read. And I got into politics because I really believe local government can be a force for good in people's lives. I'm in my third term now on the city council, and I love working with this incredible group of women. And I've seen the amazing amount of work and good that we can do.
Okay. Hua Zhang, you're next.
Hi, yeah, Hua Zhang Kim, she/her. I'm the councilmember in Ward Five. I'm currently the vice president of the St. Paul City Council. First term, Ward Five consists of a little bit of the North End, Como, and a slice of the east side. And similar to a lot of my colleagues, came up by organizing and politics. I served on the St. Paul Planning Commission, on my neighborhood district council. I had the pleasure of serving as the legislative aide to a former council president whose seat I now hold. So some surprises this year, but walked in feeling really confident around the new council, but also my ability to serve and deliver. And if I'm not in city hall, I'm running a nonprofit here in St. Paul. We focus on voting rights and electorate expansion through voter registration and civic engagement.
And what is it called?
Minnesota Voice. We're part of the state voices national.
Wonderful. And finally, we have Mitra. Hi.
Hi, Angela. Hello, NPR. I'm Mitra Jalali. I use she/her pronouns. Since 2018, I've had the honor to represent Ward Four on the city council, serving the neighborhoods of Midway, where I currently live, St. Anthony Park, Marion Park, Union Park, about the west half of Como, and a little bit of MacGroveland. So I think of my ward as the northwest part of our city, the part of the city where you come into St. Paul from Minneapolis, a place of great change, a place where we have rich transit network, a place where all of our communities have some little piece in the mosaic of the fabric of our city represented. And also, when I came in, it was the fastest-growing venture population in the city outside of downtown, and just an opportunity that I saw to bring a ton of new voices to the St. Paul conversation. I came into this work first as a classroom teacher. I was a middle and high school social studies teacher in the earliest parts of my career. I often think I survived being a middle school teacher. I can survive this job. That is an emotion I go back to when it is really tough. But that lens as a youth worker is critical for me in the city work as we think about our kids and families, our parks and libraries, everything we're responsible for. I am also the proud daughter of immigrants from Iran and South Korea, having a very culturally unique family, being Korea Persia Sotin, as I sometimes call it. And so--
What do you call it?
Korea Persia Sotin. It's just kind of like, you know, classic Minnesota.
Yeah, yeah.
She from Korea meets a man from Iran, and they just get married and they have a kid. So it, but it was, but it's so part of how I view the world, just looking for what we have in common, thinking about how every family, no matter their background, can be served better. Came into this work at the city when I was previously working in the immigration space, actually. Then Congressman Ellison had a district office. I was working on immigration issues right when Trump took office. And so I've actually really been thinking about that experience a lot as we look to the rest of the year and what we need to be prepared for as a community. So very honored to have been able to serve this community since 2018, deeply honored to get to serve this amazing council as council president right now. I always say, I think it's really special that our city made history with a group of leaders, not a single hero story or single shero story, but that we're all in national league together and have been very eager to really ground ourselves in the work ahead and in our community. So thank you for this chance to check in. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, so many of us, I just, I share with you, I reviewed the video from a year ago, the swearing-in ceremony, and it was so joyous. There's so much hope and optimism. So I'm eager to talk to you all now, a year later. And Mitra, I want you to continue on because you're the current council president. This group chose you to be the president. And so last year, when the council was sworn in, you said this in a lot of the interviews, that this kind of thing, an all-female council, a majority non-white council, shouldn't be notable. It should just be the norm. And so tell me more about that a year in.
Yeah, I think that what's been really meaningful is watching what my colleagues' representation means to their constituents, like getting to talk to community members all across the city in a more citywide-focused role now as council president. And then they'll often end their story with something like, but I know I can talk to councilmember Yang about it, or but I know that Shaniqua's got me, or like, I've been talking to Rebecca. And like, I just think our council dove in and took office really wanting to bring this whole new surge of energy to this work and to our community and to show up and to be there. And so I think about it from that lens. Like, it's not just about that face of leadership changing, it's about the style of leadership that is what is going to be required in order to correct the structural inequities that I think voters sent us to correct.
So America doesn't have a great track record when it comes to women and politics. Nationally, only 28% of the 535 seats in the US Congress are held by women, 28%. And it's a little bit better when you zoom in. Here in Minnesota, about 37% of the state representatives and senators are women. But that's still, you know, it doesn't reflect our population, certainly, which is more than 50% female, and it doesn't even take into account ethnicity or race. So here's a question for all of you. Given the political climate, what motivated you to run? I've often asked, and I have great admiration for people who step in to serve in this way, but what motivated you to run? Why put yourself on the line? And I would love to hear from each of you. I'm going to start with you, Sarah. I mean, you have a busy life, a great life, a career. Why jump into becoming a city council member?
Thank you, Angela, for the question. I think, you know, for me, as an engineer, and I've spent over a decade studying and practicing, we are problem solvers. And, you know, I've really dedicated my life in a way to community service. I've been very active politically and in the community that I serve now. And there were just issues that I saw, and I couldn't help but want to do something about it. And also recognizing that I had a special expertise as an engineer that the council and the, you know, city government, higher levels of government, doesn't really have. And a lot of the issues in our city are related to infrastructure, related to, you know, water--
Our streets.
Garbage, sidewalks, sidewalks, transportation, a lot of those things. And so I knew that there were things that we could do better, and I really wanted to lend my expertise to help solve those problems for the community that I grew up in and the community that I really care about and now raising my family in.
But weren't there some naysayers? They're like, oh, no, you don't want to do that. You don't want to work in that arena.
A little bit, yes. And I think a lot of us, you know, especially our first-time councilmembers, receive some of that, like, why, why do you want to do this? Or this, this looks really hard? Or just questioning if we even belonged in the position. A lot of us are relatively younger, and I think some of us even look younger than we actually are. And so a lot of folks are like, well, they're not, you're not qualified, or you, you know, should, you know, do something else. But this is all really important to a lot of us, and we worked really hard to get here because we care so much.
Nelsi, why jump into politics? Why choose to run for the city council?
Well, I really appreciate the focus on us, like an all-female city council. To me, that, that story that we all have weaved in our city here has a lot of deep connection to my story. And when I think of the stories and really like the testimonies, the comments that my colleagues have made at the table, even ones that I have shared, to me, it really shows that we, in some way, shape, or form, have experienced so much marginalization. We talk about our lived experiences and are able to really share it in a way that really resonates with the people we represent. And that has a really deep connection to my story in running for office because I clearly remember growing up as a daughter of refugees in a poor family where I felt we were so small and our voices didn't matter. And I actually--
I should note, you're the first Monge woman to sit on the St. Paul City Council.
Yeah, I'm the first Monge American woman to be elected onto the St. Paul City Council, and also the youngest. I was elected when I was 23. And I just remember like a lot of those moments of like feeling so small, feeling like my family, our voices didn't matter, especially when our house got foreclosed during the recession. And that picture of like our story as a family grew even larger when I realized it wasn't just my family who experienced that, that moment of devastation, but so many other people who did too. And the feeling of, a feeling like we didn't matter, feeling marginalized, like that is something that I feel is so powerful about our council because that is what really drives us to have the will to make changes, to make changes so that other people don't have to go through the obstacles, the hardships that we've gone through. And so we, I, what I love most about our council is that when I look at each of my colleagues, we do our work from a lens of deep equity because we know that that's what's needed for us to really change and dismantle the racism, the sexism, the classism in our systems, and really build it to be a system that is working for everybody.
And Anika, the same question to you. Why go beyond being a concerned citizen to jumping into the fire?
Yeah. Well, like many of my colleagues, it was, you know, my ward in St. Paul was in a place of crisis. You know, I ran right after the uprising up and down University Avenue and the devastation that made the business owners and the fear that many family members had around this crisis, this racial reckoning, right? And seeing that we need leadership that not only represented that, that community, but was courageous enough to lead us into a direction where people feel heard and also includes people, their brilliance, and that doesn't look at their community as a deficit, but actually looks at them as an asset and bringing them along into our process of making the city better. I'm born and raised here. You know, I grew up as an all-St. Paul girl.
You're a child of Rondo, right?
Child of Rondo, daughter of Rondo, Rondo royalty, you know, if some people would say. But, you know, graduated from Central High School, graduated from Hamline University, and my first job out of college was at Gordon Parks. So I taught in our St. Paul Public Schools for some years. Many of the voters that I got engaged and mobilized were first-time voters, people who did not trust or care to be involved in politics, but, you know, by actually running and getting them interested, right? And seeing their power and seeing that, you know, when they come and testify at the chambers, it actually makes a difference, right? When they come to our tables and join the policymaking, that actually makes a huge difference. So it came out of a place of grief. You know, like I said, my parents were business owners, was related to Ms. Arnilla's. For people who've been in St. Paul knows the deep roots around like having those venues and those spaces where people can congregate, people can show their talents, and we could also just support our businesses. So out of the devastation of knowing how much we have lost in St. Paul, particularly around, you know, changes that has happened that did not include, you know, our community members' voices, which is the more reason why. You know, I really scared my parents when I decided to run because they didn't know what I was getting myself into, right? But it took a lot of courage for me to step up and for them to show that like this is a vehicle for change, and this vehicle for change should also extend to other Black girls, you know, from Rondo or in St. Paul who are thinking about running and showing that motto that they can not only run and win, but they can also govern.
And thank you, Anika. And Shaniqua, I know that you worked behind the scenes with other candidates on their campaigns. You've worked for the DFL Party. And, you know, why did you yourself want to put yourself in the hot seat? Some people would see it that way and be a city council person.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm humbled to say, like, I started out being like, I didn't. I actually was, I have a staffer mindset, and I'm somebody who will jump and work with someone who wants to be elected, like, and if their values align with me, if their community values are there, if their priorities are there, and they have a vision for our community, I am quick, like genuinely quick to be the person to support them and have done other workshops and other spaces to get more women, more people of color to run for office. And that is because I know that, you know, for me, it's not just about the run. Like, it's not just about to be the person, to be the face, because you don't get to these seats without community support. So in many ways, like for me, you know, running for office was a community space. Like, I had spent, actually, once I knew that our, my predecessor was not going to run for city council, I spent a lot of time talking to eastsiders one-to-one, like, hey, have you heard that this is happening? You know, you're a leader in the community. I think you'd be great. And here are the reasons why. And a lot of, a lot of it stemmed from those in-person communication, community spaces. And eventually, towards the end, it was like December of 2022, like literally the week before it was decided in our group that the people were going to stand behind me to run for city council. I literally was like, who, you know, what are we going to do? We need a community representative. We need someone who's going to prioritize our needs. We need someone who's going to be in community, talking to everyday folks about city government because people don't actually always know what city council members view. And I'll never forget this, because when I talked, you know, I talked to Stephen, I talked to Fatima, I talked to Carl and other residents in our ward about being a city council person. And I remember each of them being like, Shaniqua, we're standing behind you, and we think that we need to have a voice. And I remember just being like, yeah, that's okay.
Because to me, it seems like what any elected office, there's some personal sacrifice. Was that ever a deterrent, though?
I mean, yeah, I think--
Privacy kind of goes out the window?
I think, me especially, you know, I appreciate councilmember Yang talking about being the youngest city council member. I'm the youngest council member on this council by like a month or two, literally right now. You know, I'm not 30 yet. I am younger than my predecessor by many decades and in many spaces where like that doesn't necessarily, you know, people want to know if you're qualified. But I represent a ward that's 33% under the age of 35. And I represent a ward that, whose annual income is $50,000 and for a family of four. So like the working-class families, the young people, the students, the like college students with Metro State being in my ward, there's a lot of things that voices were just missed on just by being in different spaces and different rooms. My community events look different. Those things that really do mean something to my, my neighbors, like to my community, that's part of what running really meant. And while it's a sacrifice, you know that the sacrifice is really to make sure that more voices are included in the, in the process.
And Rebecca, this is your third term, correct?
It is.
You keep running towards the fire. So tell us, like, why?
You know, many moments of insanity compounded one upon another. I was actually thinking about that, Angela, when you asked the question, because I was thinking, why did I run the first time, and then why did I run again, and then again? I think the first time, you know, I'm lucky to come from a family and a faith tradition that really emphasized rolling up your sleeves and getting involved in your community.
Does your family is Jewish?
Yep, we're Jewish. And my parents both served veterans at the VA Medical Center. That was their job. But then they always took time to get involved in community things. So I, I still remember when I was maybe three or four years old, my dad helped build a community playground. And I still remember going to that playground and bouncing on whatever that bouncy rubber mat was and just bursting with pride, thinking like, this is daddy's playground. This is the playground that he helped build. And I think just even back then, I was really moved by this idea that just average, normal people, my dad, could help build something that the whole community could enjoy, that I can enjoy. And my Jewish faith, I know many of my colleagues have heard me say this a lot, but I, there's a quote that I really love that's on the wall in my office. In Hebrew, it says-- which is, it's not your responsibility to finish the work, but neither are you free to turn away from it. So, you know, there's things that take eons to do. There's work that will never be finished, but you're not, you're not free of the responsibility to get involved. And then just like our council president, I also started my career in education and seeing the, the way that my, my students had truly been abandoned, given up on by most people in their lives, and the fact that that wasn't just the school system's responsibility, they spent most of their lives in the community around them. And so every other social structure that had failed them was part of the problem. So I, I knew I wanted to, to get involved and be part of the solution, and I ran again and again because I saw that you really can make a big difference in local government. You can point to tangible results of the work that you've done, people that you have helped and worked with on huge ideas, and you can really change the world around you. And that isn't naive. That's a reality. And it's something that I just, I'm, I'm hooked.
So I'm curious, your first term years ago, was the council then mostly male?
Yeah, when I ran for office the first time, there was one woman on the council. And two women joined in my, in my cohort, my class. So then we had three. And so we have come a really long way in just eight years.
Yeah. And what's the big difference? What is it? How, how does it feel different for you when you walk into the room and you're surrounded by these faces compared to the, the personalities you were working with in the past?
Well, I've, I've said this from the get-go. I mean, I think the, the fact that we're all women is historic and is remarkable and has inspired more people, I think, than any of us could have imagined around, around literally the world. But even more than that is the fact that we're all experienced, competent, qualified professionals who are deeply connected to our communities. And the fact that we've had four new members has just been remarkably exciting. We have actually asked questions about how things work that even the, the old-timers really didn't know the answers to. We just, you know, it's, it's easy when you've just been doing it for a while to assume that it always has to be this way. And this council has questioned every single thing that we do, and we've done things differently and better.
Hua Zhang, tell me, for you, what made you decide, this is the right time, I'm going to do it?
Well, I think there's never a right time or place, but like many of my colleagues, we worked on campaigns. It was my seventh cycle. I was my ninth candidate. And so I knew I could. And it's not with ego, but confidence. And so there are women listening right now, non-binary, gender expansive people that want to run for office, run! There's resources, people that are ready and willing and able to get behind you. And it's not just finding you a campaign manager, it's offering childcare, it's bringing you a hot meal on a Wednesday night when you're in the slot of GOTV. Those little things really matter, and we think about how we're going to govern differently, but also how do we campaign differently? We can't just assume, and in a lot of ways, like, you know, donations and volunteering really matters. But oftentimes, it really is a friend that comes over and folds your laundry and makes you dinner so you can get on the doors and knock another 50.
That happened?
Yes, yes, absolutely. I had friends that dropped off meals because I, you know, there's only so much time in a day, and all of us were in the throes of GOTV, we're all there. There are some things that you can't do, and sometimes it really is relying on your friend to bring you a home-cooked meal instead of grabbing for that frozen, frozen meal in the fridge. And one last thought is to just continue the statistics that you offered. But in Minnesota, we also have gender expansive people that are represented in office, and that number is also much, much smaller than representation of a cisgender woman. And here in Minnesota, we have our own, we have legislators that are kind of first and onlys as well. We have, as of the last election, the first and only two-spirit state legislator in the country here in Minnesota, that's Leech Kozalski from Duluth. We have Lee Finkie, first from SC 66, our legislator here in St. Paul, first transwoman. So not just women, but any, anyone, if you're gender expansive and you're listening, run for office, run for office, run for office, we need you.
And Mitra, when you look back, what, what was it that, what voice was, were you hearing in your head that said, yes, even this political climate we're in, it's time to do this, and I'm the person to run for my ward?
I've been thinking about this actually because, look at the new normal, right? And I remember back in the day, and I remember deciding to run, and I remember how terrifying that felt. But the, the year was 2018, and it was that first major election since Donald Trump was elected. And the national mood was just fed up. And it was the same year that Congresswoman Omar became a congresswoman, Congresswoman Ocasio-Cortez, I think Ayanna was elected that year, Congresswoman Presley, like this whole wave of like women of color came into office. And then locally, there was this little trio of women of color running for local office, and it was Angela Conley, Irene Fernando, Mitra Jalali. And so we went through that experience together and felt like the, the early-stage local government, women of color, just taken the plunge. And so I, I've been reflecting on that because now, you know, I'm leading our council, Commissioner Fernando is leading Hennepin County, Commissioner Conley is a tremendous leader in Hennepin County. Like, a lot of the movement work, it does just take time to, to build up institutional to build up institutional knowledge and then keep bringing new leaders in and along and supporting them. And so I say all that to say, I came in here just, I don't think I was invited. I don't think anybody, I know nobody knew who I was. I call that first election, the Mean Girls election, because of that scene in the cafeteria where someone is like, she doesn't even go here. And like, that is how I felt as I was newer to our city. I didn't have the sort of St. Paul political biography. I was not, I remember there was a story at the time, Fred Milo from Pioneer Press wrote a story that was like, Russ Stark is resigning to go be our chief resilience officer. Who is going to run for Ward Four? Here's a list of people who might run. Angela, they were all white. They were all the usual suspects. None of them were running. And I was nowhere to be found in that article because I was just some girl, which I know is like a little bit dismissive. I was a woman, first of all. But, you know, I just, I do feel like that was how I was viewed. And I had 10 days to put together a campaign. And I just remember thinking, this election belongs to the people of our ward. They get to choose. I don't see what I care about in the conversation. And I'm going to take the plunge. And so person by person, I just knocked doors and built this coalition. And I think that was kind of the, the whole point was just, you know, I remember people who ran against me saying like, well, she's only lived here for two years. And like, she's not really a known person and all this stuff. And I was like, yes, that's the point. Like, you shouldn't be, you should not be like entrenched in all these systems to get the right to run for office. I live in the ward. I have a platform. This is what I care about. And, and so I, I sometimes feel like I Kool-Aid manned my way into this seat. But it, you know, just like boom, like just showing up. But I just, but I, but I saw this like wave of excitement come with me because I think people were hungry for the desire to just have it be that accessible. And so that is, I think, at the heart of what I care about. It's inclusion. It's trying to always, always like, someone is leading you and you have the chance to lead someone and bring them along. And I've worked so hard to live that out. So I feel like the opposite of, like Councilmember Johnson shared such a beautiful story of her community being like, we want it to be you. And my community was like, who's it going to be? Who's it going to be? Who's it going to be? We got to find somebody. What's going to happen? And then I just like raised my hand. And I was like, for your consideration, here's what I care about. And so that, I think that's part of why me and my constituents are like so tight is because we just truly built this relationship, like through that process. And then I've run three times. I had to run in 2018. I had to run in 2019. I had to run in 2023. I keep coming back to check in and being like, Ward Four, you still want me here? And they're like, each time, I am so moved and honored that they're like, yeah, Mitra, we're good. So they keep sending me back. So that's my arc.
Constituents, I'm sure you all get a lot of feedback. As a journalist, I get a lot of feedback. People have a lot to say. And so I'm just curious if any of you have stories about the feedback from your constituents about the fact that we now have a council in St. Paul that is all women, mostly women of color, younger women? What do some, what do people say to you? You know, what have you heard people come up to you and say about that fact?
I hear a lot about some of our elders saying, we never thought we'd see something like this happen. So being able to see it in their lifetime. And also younger generations, like some of us are aunties, right? Or even have younger generations in our lives where now they've seen it possible. So their perception of what is possible is intrinsically changed, right? So an all-female city council, what's next, right? What are we coming after next? So I think it, it can help shift the reality of what's possible. And I think that's the message that I've heard loud and clear, which feels really, really special and important.
But I'm guessing a lot of your constituents, particularly people who enjoy going to council meetings and providing a lot of feedback, particularly, you know, white men, accustomed to seeing themselves represented white men on the council. Like, what have they had to say about this new group that's now sitting and occupying all the seats?
They've been kind of quiet.
Yeah, put them on mute.
Here's the thing, I think like, here's where I would like to push the conversation to because I think that we have made our point. We have, our voters have sent us here. We are here to do, I was looking at my Instagram from a year ago today. And the thing I had written was, this historic council was sent to do historic work because you know how the internet will just bring back your stuff from a year ago and have you look at it. So I think we've all been like reflecting on our memories from a year ago. The connection to being women in public policy is things like, we passed a wage theft ordinance just this past year. And in St. Paul, the industries that impacts and matters the most for are hospitality, home care, construction. How many of those workers are women, are working in restaurant industry, are working in home healthcare settings? And they are at risk of their wages not being given to them. And now we have a local ordinance to help us basically enforce the model state law. Like, that is a feminist issue. We have a community safety system that we've worked to build out in our community so that everyone can be safe and stable and that we're not just sending the police as the only response to everything. We know that matters for women, women of color, all the families in our community. We are looking at housing policy because we know that, you know, we're working to bring an administrative citations charter change. We just put that on the council agenda yesterday. Why does that matter? Because other municipalities have this tool to do things like uphold their ordinances, respond to violations that happen around building code. And those things matter for women in our community who have their rent being hiked up by their landlord and don't have enough recourse under rent stabilization. People who are trying to start a small business and can't because that vacant property is blighted and sitting there. And we need to find ways to force that, that out-of-state concentrated ownership out of there so that we can actually build community wealth. And so I just, I think that it's important to talk about, how is your leadership received when you are an unapologetic woman of color? And it has to extend to, here's what that looks like in the issues we're working on and the work that we're doing. That's the lens that I try to bring to our work. That's what we've done together as a council so far. Those are all things that we've worked on. And I just, I think that we'll keep getting asked about, what do the men think? And I'm like, I'm not hearing the men talking about housing. So when they're ready to come to the conversation I'm in, then we can talk about that. Like, that's, that's issue-focused leadership that also is inclusive of our identities. Is this making sense?
Yeah. Add a bit to it, too. I really love what Council President Jalali said about us being unapologetic about being women. When you asked your question, it was honestly tough for me to answer, not because I didn't have anything to say about it, but because I really feel that through our campaign journeys, each of us alone, we, we really, we really were bold and unapologetic about who we were, you know, whether it was us being a woman or, you know, our sexuality or our identities, you know, the different, the different things that made us who we were. Like, we didn't hide that, but we knew that it was an obligation for us to be really true about who we were because we weren't just running for only ourselves, but really to inspire other people to come after us and actually to be in these seats one day. And so I talk a lot about my identity as a mom because growing up, I, I didn't see a lot of people who, you know, who were in these roles, who had little kids. I'm the first, I'm the first council member in our city to go on maternity leave. And so to even have to go through that journey.
Really?
Yeah, it was, was really interesting.
And again, for our listeners, this is Nelsi who is speaking. Now you're in your second term.
Yeah. And so like, we, I feel like we don't hear a lot of the pushback because we know that our different identities, it doesn't define who we are, but it's actually really something that is a deep asset to our leadership and what we bring to the table. And that on top of that, we have a mission to our communities, to the people that we represent as well, and we are ready to deliver.
Now, four of you are in your first term. And I know that you all made a decision to campaign together. Sora and Shaniqua, I ran into you all at a fundraising event. And you're like, yeah, you're like, we're running. I'm running in this ward, she running in that ward. So tell me about making a decision to campaign together. I mean, I don't, I don't see that a lot. Why did you choose to do that and how was that beneficial?
Sure, I can start. I think that a lot of us recognized early on for these open seats that there were women and women of color running. I'm a little bit newer to the sort of, you know, political, local political universe here compared to some of the other candidates. But it's a very small community and everyone knows each other. And we knew, we all knew that our campaigns were going to be very, very challenging in similar ways. And so when we, when we really got to know each other, we really leaned on each other for support because you don't understand what it's like to be a candidate until you're a candidate. Or you don't understand what it's like to be a council member either until you're a council member. And so just having other women that we could talk to, women of color that shared these experiences, like I could call one of them up and say, I heard this on the doors and, you know, it really didn't make me feel great. And they're going through similar things. And we can talk to each other about it. Really helped get through those difficult times. And I think that's why we all really came together. And additionally, we, we knew that there were a lot of values that we all shared. And so we, we wanted to run together and we wanted to, to work together.
Shaniqua, do you remember that? We were, I think, at the Tony Sonnet Foundation Gala. And you're like, you live in St. Paul, right? You live in Highland Park. You know, you should vote for this woman. And I was like, okay. But what was it like campaigning together? And why was that beneficial?
You know, I think that for me, I can't tell you how invaluable it was to have, if anything, like Sora had mentioned, just somebody to call and say like, hey, this is an experience that I had on the doors. And, you know, how are you handling this? Even just something as small is like, we had similar mailings that went out about us from some of the same entities, some of the same organized strategy of opposition. The glorious thing about campaigning and finance reports is that you can see kind of what political action committees are targeting certain races or vocalizing in certain races. And we had some of that happening here in St. Paul. And I remember just being able to say like, you know, as a candidate at the time, I'm running in my ward and even just seeing how that was confusing people. Like, the information that people were able to see or receive wasn't, wasn't my experience from just talking to some of the candidates. And I remember like it just being really important for folks to have that ally across, across ward lines to be like, hey, I had a conversation with Sora. And yeah, Angela, you should talk to her because I actually got a chance to meet her and hear more about her, about her family. I got to meet her son. Like, I got to see the women that are sitting next to me in multiple ways. And that just helped tremendously in how we govern now. You know, I don't just see Sora as my council colleague. She's met my parents. I've met her family. Like, I legit would say that I know who Sora is outside of, outside of the council, outside of the title. And as a result, I have a different level of respect for her. And I think, and it comes from just like how we establish norms and how we establish culture and how we stood on certain values when it came to how we treat each other. And that, to me, has been really helpful because I feel like amongst the council and even just in the space, the big things, you know, even just the questions we would get at the beginning. Is that like for political gain? Is that like something? And it was like genuine. Like, I actually feel like hearing some of the platforms and even just seeing what they cared about really helped me understand that I was walking into a council that valued housing, just like I value housing. I was walking into a council that valued public safety, like I value public safety, that valued and had experience to talk about climate justice for the first time in a real way. And I valued that, that literally the policies and the things that, the promises I was making to my ward, like the priorities I had, that it wasn't, like, it wasn't going to be something that I had to kind of fight for, but that it was broadly accepted across members of the council. And that was a little bit of a relief because you walk into something knowing that you've got a couple other voices in the room besides one. Because while we're a council member, nothing moves in our work without four votes. Not a single thing. I could want something, all, all of it and as much as I want. And it not move for my ward without three other council members at least that agree with me. And that's been something that, you know, that's probably why. I thought there was benefits in running with or alongside some of the women that I see here now. And when they won their races, I just remember going back and be like, okay, now we got to start the work together as well.
And we're going to talk more about that, about now doing the work a year later, looking back on how things are going. But I just want to remind people, if you're just tuning in, if you're just joining us, you are listening to a North Star Journey Live conversation on NPR News with the seven women who make up the St. Paul City Council. They are the first all-female council of a city this size in the United States. Also, one of the youngest and most diverse, which brings us to something I want to talk more about. You know, NPR News, we started this North Star Journey Live project the summer of 2020 as a place to have conversations about Minnesota's persistent racial disparities, a topic we talk a lot about on my talk show. But how do you all think the diversity of this council addresses that? Are, are you in unique positions to actually bring about some change? Because you represent the communities that are most impacted. And in the future, do you think we'll be sitting here, you know, maybe in 20 years, saying, hey, remember when we had those seven women on the council? They got some stuff done. They moved mountains. Like, I would love to have that conversation. But Anika, you know, you talked about, you know, your family having long roots, more than about 100 years, your family has been here in St. Paul. What do you think about that? Is this going to be a memorable time in history? We look back and like, yeah, things got done.
Absolutely. You know, I, how I approached this council was all about like building legacy. And we are building that legacy together. I lead in such a way to where I could look back 20 years from now and be proud of the work that we have created. I think there's also part of that diversity is showing up and who we're actually partnering with to build, whether it's housing, creating more jobs and building, you know, infrastructure, new infrastructure, and who we're bringing around the table to do that work. I want, you know, our residents and people in St. Paul to look back and say, hey, you know, the council member had built, you know, our commercial corridors. They have rebuilt, you know, they have addressed the vacancies that we have in our midway. We have, we did, we did right and justice to the Rethinking I-94, you know, project. A lot of things that are big, major decisions on how the city interacts and also can be a partner in growing, whether it's housing and jobs. And, you know, legacy is really important. It's protected and supported by our community leaderships. And, you know, for myself, growing up in here and just hearing from my other colleagues, I think a lot of people think, well, you've been here, so of course you have this seat. But, you know, as a young woman, a black woman, I've had to deal with gatekeeping. I had to, you know, really overthrow a lot of the naysayers. And even, you know, in the, in the pursuit of getting into this office also has a pursuit of making sure we have investments in, in Ward One. And ensuring that restrengthening that table that table of people who want to invest in Ward One is important.
And Nellie, as we think about the persistent racial disparities that we have here in Minnesota, what is your hope as, you know, the first Hmong woman on the council, working now with a group of other, you know, women of color, the impact that you all might be able to have now?
Well, what I really appreciate about our council and the makeup of it is that I really feel we, we all bring our own strengths to the table, like in a policy area that, that one of us may care about. Maybe if we don't have time for it, then another person can fill in. Or, you know, if I don't have a strong interest in something, then my colleague might. And so we, we really fill each other's holes and complement each other. And I believe that that's what makes our, our team, our council as a whole so strong. And when I think about just my role as a, as a council member who is Hmong American, like, I have a lot of pride that this is a council that believes so deeply that our city must be a place where everybody belongs. And that's what we care deeply about, about even just talking about, about topics that typically don't even really come up in, in local government. And that's, how can we stop deportations of our communities who are, you know, facing that right now? And talking about reproductive justice, too, childcare. And so I, I really love the boldness that we bring to the table. And I feel that that diversity is really what allows for more doors to be open and more policies, more changes to be possible in local government.
Now, as I've done research for our conversation, one of the things I was struck by is that despite all the camaraderie, you definitely are not a monolith. You disagree sometimes. You have different priorities. But in public examples at least, you have found some ways to continue to work together. And so, case in point, last spring, the council did end up passing, the city, St. Paul City Council ended up passing, passing a ceasefire resolution in the Israel Hamas war. Rebecca, we've noted, your, your family's Jewish, you're Jewish. And I understand that, that you lost someone in the October 7th attack on Israel. And you've had concerns. So take us back to how do you reach agreement after having disputes?
Yeah, thanks, Angela. Yeah, my children's kindergarten teacher was killed on October 7th. And it was a very difficult issue, I think, for this council. It was one of the first issues that we dealt with as a council that was truly one where we had to be in conflict and tension with each other. I was really grateful, as Councilmember Johnson said at that time, for the fact that I really felt connected to all of my colleagues outside of the, the titles that we all hold. I felt comfortable talking to all of them about my own identity, where I was coming from, the, the history that I was holding. And at the end of the day, you know, we were able to get to a, a resolution that definitely not, not everyone is going to agree with everything that you do. And it was certainly controversial in my own community, among my own constituents as well. But that, I think, really was a fair resolution and was a lot better than a lot of other communities around us had, had passed. And that was because we were able to talk to each other. So I think that that, that ability to disagree civilly and to continue to just hold our relationships above all has been not only important, but, but frankly unprecedented. I don't know that we're great in Minnesota at being in tension. I don't think we're great in this country right now, in general, in this world, in this time of social media occupying our, our lives all the time, to be able to be really human and authentic with one another and still hold that relationship above the disagreement.
I want to ask you all a question that I get a lot as we start this new year, ending 2025. How do you describe your mindset right now? I mean, do you feel discouraged or encouraged or something else? And, you know, you can kind of pick your own words for this. But as a journalist, people often will come up to me and they're like, Angela, how are you feeling about things? And I don't, I don't know what to say because, you know, I want to be optimistic, but some days it's really hard. And so as you get up each morning and you're responding to phone calls and emails and messages from constituents, you're talking with your staff, you're thinking about your next meeting, how do you describe, like, how are you feeling right now about what this year, what 2025 may hold, given, I mean, what we know about what is happening with the state legislature, what is happening with the federal government? A lot of change is coming. And so how do you describe, you know? Rebecca, how you doing?
I knew you'd start with me on that one. I mean, it is a time of uncertainty and it's a time of transition, for sure. But I also
Those are good words, uncertainty and transition.
I'm uncertain and I feel like we're in a time of transition. But I also think, I mean, this is why I'm so grateful to be at the local level. Because that's, the work that we're doing continues no matter what. I remember talking to someone right before the election last year, someone else involved in a nonprofit organization locally saying, you know, whatever happens in Washington, we're going to keep doing the work. And the fact that, you know, my next meeting after this is going to be a community conversation where we'll talk about streets and we'll talk about bike lanes and we'll talk about homelessness and we'll talk about housing. Like, that is very grounding in a time when everything else is uncertain. And the most, the greatest burden, I would say, I feel when I wake up every day as we look towards January 20th, is being prepared, being prepared to take care of our people and to defend ourselves as a city in a time when we, we may be under attack from, from the federal level.
But doesn't it feel like, if you're a local leader now, that, that, that there is more significance to your role? Do you, do you feel that way, you know, some days?
Even Cher, I think especially with the Trump administration, the burden does feel heavy, right? And I think we can't be oblivious to that. But, you know, that burden, we don't have to hold alone or carry alone. This is why, you know, before the Trump election on January 19th, I planned on hosting the first ever elders council, which is going to be an advisory group to my office and to my leadership, really just helping to usher in that guidance, that wisdom around these policy decisions that we make and also get some of their institutional knowledge, right? And they've been here for a while and could bring a perspective that I may not be aware of, right? Of how to navigate this space as a first time elected official and also how to navigate the city and stand in my power. So I think, yes, the burden is hard. Yes, it's going to be more challenging on our constituents. But as a leader, it's important that, you know, this brings us closer to the people who can help us and support us throughout.
And Wa Zhang, how would you describe your mindset as you approach 2025?
Yeah, I mean, I'd be disingenuous if I said I wasn't scared, for sure. There's a lot always at stake. And I will just lift up Councilmember Naker's remarks. Last year, my personal theme was harmony. This year, it's togetherness. And it's not in spite of, I don't do this, this pursuit of joy in spite of white supremacy or in spite of Trump or in spite of all the things that are against us. I do it because I'm deserving of joy. And so, you know, I, I swore in on bell hooks. And one of the things that she talks about is leaning from the margins and how it's not to decenter whiteness, but it's to create a wider, broader, richer margin where we untangle these things together, but where we find a resilient joy. And so that's honestly what I'm trying to center my life on, but not in spite of, but because I am, you are, all of us are deserving of joy and happiness. And it's in, within that, I find my most resilient mindset, my most resilient space. But that takes diligence, it takes dedication, and it takes discipline, to be honest, because the doom scroll is, is very real these days.
Yes. All right. Some great words. We've heard uncertainty, change, resilience, joy. What can you add to how you would describe your mindset? Sorry.
I, I still feel some optimism. I'm, I
Ooh, touch my hand.
I am also a little bit scared. I am worried and anxious. But I know that we have a really great group of women here that care about a lot of the same things. We've been working really hard this past year. And I know that we're going to continue doing that work together. And I think that, you know, for me, thinking about the negative things and things that could go wrong don't help me solve problems and, and get things done. And they don't, you know, a lot of it is emotional and mental when it comes to getting this work done. And so I try to stay in that mindset of what are the things that we can do? And there's a lot that we can do to what Councilmember Naker said, at the local level. We do have, we do have power. We have our own budget. We have issues that affect everyday lives of people, you know, not in the same way that national issues do, you know, things like, is your, is your road safe? Are you going to be able to get clean water?
Are you going to plow my street? What about the alleys?
And so those are things that we have been working on and that we will continue to work on. And so that gives me a lot of hope. And even though we do feel, and there are folks that maybe feel powerless and worried right now, like, we do have a lot of power and your local government is, is still working very hard for you.
Shaniqua, how do you describe your mindset? When people ask you, how are you approaching 2025?
Realistically, I think that like, for me, it's about keeping it real with my constituents. You know, on the east side, I've been to many community events on the east side where, you know, you walk in and you're looking at, at individuals and people can tell when you talk around in circles, like, and they are quick. Like, my constituents, we don't play the political, you know, roundabout way of explaining issues. When someone asks a question about if you're going to plow their road and you're like, the budget is kind of tight, or they're like, no, 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 I'd like to know if you're going to plow my street, like, and when. So for me, my approach is really just trying to make sure that folks know what they're walking into, what's actually going on. I get that question a lot. What's really going on in city council? Like, what's really going on in city hall? And I try to keep it as honest as possible.
Nellie?
For me, my mindset is really just giving myself permission to feel, whether it's if I'm waking up and I'm feeling anxious, I let myself feel that. If I'm feeling joy in some way, I let myself feel that. And most importantly, to remember that tomorrow's a new day. And if anything, that, if it's anything I've learned about grassroots organizing, which is such a core part of who I am and why I'm here, here as an elected official, as an organizer too, is that there's really nothing more powerful than people, than the power of people coming together. So the most important thing is really to reject isolation and always make sure I'm surrounded by people who are, who are my loved ones, people who are my community, people who are my most, you know, trusted folks who I can always go to. And honestly, everything always comes back to community for me. Like, if I'm feeling really down, I go to a community event, I get to meet my neighbors, get to meet folks who I maybe have seen, you know, haven't seen for a long time, or maybe have seen on the daily. And it really brings me back to life. And so community is really always that root for me, that root of joy.
Mitra, as our council president, how are you feeling about the, the months ahead?
I think the emotion I come to it with is determination. And I think that comes from governing through the Trump years, honestly, fighting Donald Trump in Congress and then pivoting to local government and going through the pandemic, the uprisings, things that my colleagues have talked about. I spent this week putting together resources for our council and our city employees. I think it's important, since we're talking about this to our constituents, I want people to know the city of St. Paul has a separation ordinance that we uphold very fiercely. Our local law enforcement do not do federal immigration duties. We do not coordinate with ICE. And we have resources actually within our city attorney's office. If you want to pursue citizenship and get access to that as protection in a administration forthcoming that is promising and bragging about raids, promising and bragging mass deportations, you know, I'm an Iranian American. I am personally affected by the Muslim ban and the travel ban. The Iranian community nationally is bracing again for that same type of extreme policy that divides families and unfairly targets people based on their faith, a racialization of their faith, racist logic, right? And so I think it's important to say, the city of St. Paul is 10 toes down for our community from our newest elected council member to our mayor. And frankly, because we will be vocal about that, I also am bracing for retaliation. The, the ability to apply for federal funds conditioned on things that we just will not entertain. We will not sell out our constituents for funds to law enforcement from the federal government. We will not break our separation ordinance to do the work of ICE. Like, these are things that we're going to be very, very strict on. And so I think this next chapter is about uniting and being shoulder to shoulder so that no matter who's in office, these are the laws that are in place and that we are going to make sure our community is protected. So I just do care about our community knowing that as we're heading into the next few weeks.
What I heard was 10 toes down and shoulder to shoulder. I like that. That's how we're going to end our hour. Thank you, councilwomen. Thank you for your time. I do appreciate it. I'm proud to be a resident of St. Paul and I'm glad that you all are, are in the seats that you are in. What an honor to have all of you here at NPR News with us and, and to get to listen to each of you really reflect authentically on this historic year. I want to say thank you again to all the members of the All Women St. Paul City Council. And let's go through those names again, because I want you to remember them. From Ward One, we have Anika Bowie. You want to wave, Anika? From Ward Two, Rebecca Naker. Thank you, Councilwoman Naker. Ward Three, Sora Jost with us. Thank you, from my neighborhood. And from Ward Four, Council President Mitra Jalali. Thank you, Mitra, for being here. Ward Five, we have Wa Zhang Kim. Thank you, Councilwoman Kim. And from Ward Six, Nelsi Yang. Nelsi, thank you. And Ward Seven, Shaniqua Johnson. Again, thank you all for being here. Thank you for listening today. And be well, everybody. We'll continue on in 2025. Thanks, Angela.
Thank you.